Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 11th meeting for the Town Planning Board. I'd like to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
For your information, there are emergency exits on either side of the room. The restrooms are out the door and to the left. Please sit, if you haven't, sign in. Please sign at the attendance sheet on the table in the back of the room, no matter if you're presenting or just observing. There are business cards back there, too, if you need contact information for the planning department. And also, there's copies of any of the resolutions that we're going to be entertaining this evening. Please silence your cell phones, either turn them off or turn them on silent. And if you have any conversations you need to make amongst yourselves, take it out of the room to the hallway. Perfect, okay. We do have one set of meeting minutes, the 14th of March. Does anybody have any comments for Lisa? Joe, Al?
I'll say.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve that meeting minutes.
I'll move.
Al moves.
Second.
Joe, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Scott Harder is not attending this evening, is unable to attend the meeting. Correspondence received, do we have any, other than what we got in our packets? And board committee updates, Ed?
Yeah, sure, just very quickly, can you hear me around the mic? Yep, okay. The town just got its results back for the court audit and the financial audit from Mengele Metzger Bar and Company. Both were deemed to be very good in their opinion, so are on firm financial footing, which is always a good thing. So, no issues with accounting or finances in the town. And secondarily, just so that you know, Joe, specifically to you, Mr. Condon brought up and mentioned to the board that he thought you did a great job last meeting, dealing with, you know, the couple people that had neighborly issues. So, he just mentioned it in the meeting, and I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that it was recognized.
Thank you.
That's it.
Appreciate that, thank you, Ed. Lisa, I guess you're...
Yep.
...sent on the next meeting.
Your next planning board meeting is April 25th. As of right now, the only thing that's going to be on it is the carryover of PMD addition. And that's all.
Okay, thanks. We have three items on the agenda this evening. The first one, actually all three, I believe, are public hearings. PMD addition is the first item on the agenda. An applicant is requesting approval to construct 16,800 square feet addition to the east side of the existing 73,000 square foot building to be used for assembly of automation equipment, and that's on Rowley, 727 Rowley Road, so.
Good evening, I'm Steve Schultz, MRB. I'm here with Tim Lochner from PMD. It's been about 10 years since we were here. That's when they got approval and built their building over on Rowley Road. As you mentioned, they're looking to construct 16,800 square foot addition. It's roughly 280 by 60, about 25 feet tall. The finishes will be a metal outside with about a four-foot block wainscot, sloping metal roof. Colors will match existing building. It's really not very visible from the road, it's going to be tucked in behind. It will sit on an existing parking lot that's behind the building now. So, we will be adding some parking over along the, on the main lot. This is up by the addition. They don't quite meet what's there now or a code, so I wrote another letter requesting a reduction by the board for a planning. I understand that you have that capability. Tim told me and in the letter that he doesn't necessarily need all the spaces required by code. A lot of people work from home now, and so it leaves what we have as sufficient. As far as, there's a couple of comments about drainage from the town engineer. We'll use the existing drainage facilities on site. We're only adding about not 3,500 square feet of impervious area. So, the drainage facilities that were designed 10 years ago, I look back, and they were essentially oversized. I mean, they're more than adequate for an additional 3,500 square feet, which is pretty minimal on this big of a site.
You're covering over already impervious space, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we're covering already impervious space. The only real area that we're adding is just that raw parking on adjacent to the lot that would cover grass, and actually, the parking lot here extends past the, um, there'll be some green space behind the building. As far as lighting goes, we're only adding, at least according to the architectural plans, three lights. They'll be the same lights that are on the building now, just moved to the new addition.
Are these wall packs?
Yeah, there's this wall pack, down-facing wall packs.
Okay, so they're full cutoff directly down?
Yep, facing down. And so, right now, I believe there's six or seven on the back of the building, and now there'll be just three or, no more than what's there now. And we received comments from various town agencies, and we can address those. Like, we already addressed the fire marshal's comments, and landscaping was okay, and we can address LaBella's comments.
Okay. It's a public hearing, I'll start with the board. Al, any comments, questions?
Well, so the only question is on where your proposed addition of parking. It looks like there's kind of a steep rise right there, so is there any retaining wall or anything required to secure that slope?
No, we're going to keep the same slope, we're just going to push it back. We have, there's already a ditch there, a pretty big ditch, so the hill is already kind of set back some, so we don't have to go back too far. And we're going to keep a, so put in a smaller ditch behind it, just to collect any runoff from the hillside. It's not, it's not as tall as the one behind the addition, so it's, it shouldn't be too much of a problem.
Okay, so that was my only question and just a comment is, you know, it's good to see local businesses, you know, thriving and expanding, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Al, Ernie? Questions, comments?
I did have one, but I just answered it for myself, so I'll say.
Hey, Joe?
I have two. The first, and they're both relative to parking, that area you just indicated across the top there is proposed for potential additional parking? No, no, up on a, yeah, that last area that you traced across the top of the building?
Over here.
Yes.
No, 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 that's, that's an area...
Steve, you need to be in the mic for...
Okay, it's a fire lane, though, right, essentially?
No, it's just, there's just a little bit of a...
Steve, could you talk more over that, just so I can get it on the record? It doesn't catch it.
Yeah, there's probably about 10 feet more asphalt beyond the addition, that'll just come out.
Okay, and I appreciate the rationale between, you know, about the reduced parking based on people working from home. And I know at least one of, well, my daughter in particular, has been working from home during COVID, but they're bringing people back partially during the week. So, I appreciate what the rationale is short-term, what's the prognosis long-term for keeping people working at home. That's, that's my only issue with, with, with the parking.
Yeah, we've generated a policy that departments, we look at them, analyze them...
If you could just state your name and, for the record...
Yeah, sorry, Tim Lochner, owner of PMD. We've developed a policy that we put in place for working from home. And so, we analyze each department, department by department, and like, for example, our whole sales force works from home. And they, we find that they're much more productive as well. So, there was really no need to bring them back, it works very well.
Okay.
Same with purchasing, we've had a hard look at that, and a lot of those folks are working from home now, and it just works out great, and they're really happy as well.
Oh, very good, that works. And to mirror what Al said, I'm thrilled that we got a local business expanding as well. And I appreciate that you've thought this out with the working at home, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you gotta, you gotta take advantage of these opportunities with the folks, you know, because you gotta keep them.
Sure.
And then, there's a lot of them that can work from home. They have that makeup and that chemistry to do that.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, thanks, Joe. I just had Susie put up the building elevations this, for reference, in case there were any questions regarding that. It looks like it just fits the existing facade as an expansion. So, I think it looks fine, it's certainly unobtrusive, and I think it'll fit the Rowley Road, so.
They probably won't even notice it's there.
Yeah, it's set back, it's backing up to the hill, so.
Matches the color and...
Mm-hmm. So, that's fine. Anyone from the public interested in addressing the board or the applicant with questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Al moves.
Second.
Ernie seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried. No, I didn't have any questions, I was just thinking about the section of the parking area to the left that you're expanding. It looks like you're cutting some of the hill back and re-grading...
Yep.
On the site plan?
Yep.
So, no, no issues with...
No, we're not gonna, we're gonna keep the same, we're gonna keep the same slope on the hill, it just pushes back.
Okay.
So, it's been stable, and it'll be vegetated, and we'll have a swell at the bottom to collect the runoff before it enters the parking lot, so.
There's always questions about soil stability in that area of the town.
Yeah, I know, I know, he had some issues with the bigger hill in the back initially, and kind of resolved those with some under drains and some vegetation on the hillside and things like that.
Sure. Okay, Wes, any comments?
Thanks, Joe. Yeah, LaBella did issue a letter just yesterday, April 10th, 2023, with a few comments, and they're not too terribly concerning. We did talk about the building-mounted light fixtures already, and if you, if you wouldn't mind to be able to provide us with a, in your response, the catalog cut sheet, just to confirm that they're full cutoff fixtures, that would be fine.
Yeah, we can do that.
And then, just for the planning board's familiarity, there wasn't a lighting plan that was included in the plan set. Generally, we would want to see a lighting plan, but with three fixtures, and given that the illumination intensity is going to remain the same, it's, and we're kind of in the back of the building, we don't anticipate a large increase in the footprint of the illumination. So, I, you know, I don't know that there's a need for them to provide a lighting plan in this particular instance, but I'll leave that up to, up to you. I'm, I think LaBella is comfortable moving forward with just having a catalog cut sheet, and that would be fine with us.
Does anyone on the board have issue with deferring to Wes's?
No issue.
About it, so, okay. That's your answer.
Okay. And then, there were a couple of questions regarding the stormwater area, the temporary sediment basin, and it's a little more technical in nature, really just, we would want MRB group to describe for us how, how the infiltration capacity would be protected in the infiltration basin, as a portion of it is going to be used temporarily as a sediment basin. And then, treatment of roof runoff, we're just looking for some comment on the quality of water expected from the new building's roof. Pre-treatment would generally be required prior to discharge in an infiltration basin. But otherwise, there's nothing too glaring that's standing out in our...
Yeah, I can respond to both of those. I looked through, and he had a good point about the sediment basin, so I think what we'll do is we'll move it over to where the catch basins are and not have it in the infiltration basin. So, I think that would address that part of it. And as far as the treatment of the roof runoff, it's, I mean, it's a metal roof, so there's no tar and, you know, all the little beads on a jingle and all that sort of stuff coming down. But this, looking back at the drainage calc, this, that facility called an infiltration basin one is, is actually more of a pre-treatment for infiltration for this one here, because this basin drains into this infiltration basin. Essentially, the roof runoff will be pre-treated before it even goes into the basin. And like I said, the infiltration basins were oversized initially, so they can, they can accommodate much more than even the 3,500 that were increasing impervious. I'll put all that in a letter of response, and...
That'd be perfect.
We'll do it before the next meeting, so, so he can move ahead, and he's got his building ordered and stuff, so.
So, for the minutes, this, I'll call it the southeast basin drains to the southwest corner of the building?
Yep, yeah, and they're called, they're numbered down there.
One and two?
One and two, yeah, one drains the two instead of, it'd be different if one drained to the road and two drained to the road, but since one drains the two, it essentially gets treated twice.
Okay.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yep.
Good. Okay. Steve mentioned it's not going to be acted on tonight, it, we, it's at the county planning board for tomorrow? So, we'll be able to address this in a resolution at the next board meeting? And if you'd make a note what you just talked about with the work in the, you know, the drainage in the back of the building? I think you said you would, you were talking about moving it to the middle of the back of the building?
Oh, just the, we have a sediment basin we put in the filtration basin, and we'll move it back to where the, where the catch basins are and have it at the catch basin.
Okay, if you can either address that in your notes, like you were saying...
Yeah, we'll, we'll put on the plans, and I'll put it in a response to LaBella.
Building inspectors would be much happier with that on the plans, so.
Yeah, we'll put it on the plans.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
We'll see you next time.
See you in two weeks.
Thank you. Yeah. Item number two, First Light Fiber Site Plan Modification, 7890 Lehigh Crossing. Owners, the Ontario County IDA. Applicants requesting approval to construct a 2,981-square-foot lay-down yard for storage of fiber installation equipment associated with ongoing operations. A new fence will be installed around the new paved area. Good evening.
Good evening, hi, my name's Jake Monteselli. I work for a company called Aerosmith Development. We're, we're a consultant with First Light, helping them with obtaining the permits and approvals needed for doing this expansion. The, so as I said, the, at this location, First Light already has kind of a satellite office there, so they would, basically just looking to add on a, basically a lay-down yard. You know, they're kind of working all throughout the area, installing the fiber around the cables throughout, probably see them around the trucks. So, they just need some extra area to basically act as lay-down yard for mainly storage of their fiber and cable spools and things of that nature. They'd be looking to extend, so there's already paved parking area there, they'd be looking to extend that paved area, about 3,000 square feet, onto the backside, the north side there. There wouldn't be any, there's a conservation easement there, they'd be staying out of that, and they would be looking to, they would like to install a wooden fence around the area as well. Yeah, just like that, that's a similar one they've installed. That's one that they installed out in the Buffalo area, so they'd be looking to install similar fence to that.
Are you looking at also landscaping like that, or just the...
Yeah, yeah, I believe so, yep, yeah, I believe they're, yeah, looking, they'd put in some similar type of landscaping.
Okay. Questions from the board, Joe?
We're talking things like interduct lashing wire, cable reels, that sort of...
Yeah, cable reels, yep, yeah.
Do we dispatch vehicles out of there now, or are there bucket trucks that operate out of it?
Um, I, that, I'm not sure, I believe right now, it's mainly just like pickup trucks. They don't really have, like, big utility bucket trucks and things like that, they're out of there, yeah. There may be some of that, you know, parking there, but there's, yeah, they mainly would be a lay-down yard for equipment, you know, drop equipment, then come pick up stuff, and...
Currently, the techs have to go over to the main location.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot of what's going on, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's kind of be more or less kind of a lay-down staging area, so they can, you know, leave some spools there and then pick them up and go, go out to the field with it.
Any increase anticipated in, I know it's a commercial area, but do you see more truck traffic with deliveries there and techs coming in and out rather than going to the main office?
Um, it's potential, I can't, you know, I can get an answer for you on there, clarity, but yeah, I can't tell you for sure.
I'm curious, I don't think it's a deal breaker.
They're likely would be, I would imagine there would be, yes, yeah, but, yeah.
I'm good, thank you.
Ernie?
What effect does the storm sewer easement have on this? Because it looks like it runs right...
Yeah, so the, the storm sewer easement, that's under the area that's, that's not within the expansion area, that's under the already paved area, and any of the posting, fence posts would be, would be outside of that easement.
It looks like there's a driveway type of a thing that's going to go right across it, right?
Yeah, yes, yeah, so there's, there's an already paved asphalt area that's, so it's actually the, there's a parking area that's paved over that, where that storm sewer easement is already, and then the paved area, the new paved area would be beyond that easement.
That's all I had, Joe.
Okay, Al? So, just to clarify, so, because we had photographs of fencing that was chain-linked with privacy screening, but that's not what you're intending, it's the wood?
Yeah, so I checked, I know there was a question about the fencing and the rep from First Light, that's the other day, he sent me those pictures, and he said, this is what we'd like to, you know, something similar to this, this is what we did just not too long ago in Buffalo.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, thanks, so I'd call that wooden stockade fence?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. I don't know if it is stated on the plans as that? Maybe we should make sure it's stated or noted in the resolution?
Absolutely, I will, I'll have that up there.
Okay. This is a public hearing, anyone from the audience wish to speak? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Joe moves, Ernie seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried. I don't have any other questions, I'm, the only thing is, if you're re-grading for this new expanded paved area, it looks like you have to adjust the contours, if you will, in that area, and it looks awfully close to the conservation easement line. You're confident you can re-grade and pave without going beyond that conservation easement?
Yeah, I, so my background's not in engineering design, but I can, I'll get with those engineers, done, get you some clarification on that, absolutely.
Yeah, because it's, as far as I know, it's a no-touch conservation easement, I don't know, Wes, you can...
There's a note on here that staff comment applicant to clarify if it is a six-foot fence or eight-foot fence.
Okay. You know what the fence is?
No, I'll clarify that, too.
I guess the question is, does it make a difference if it's six or eight?
Who's going to see it?
Yeah. Maybe from the trail back there? That's about all.
I don't know for sure, but it seems like maybe the limit, height limit for fencing might be six feet. So, if they intended to go higher, they may need to seek a variance, but I don't know for sure. And I can check on the code.
Wes, I think it's eight feet.
It is eight feet.
But there was discrepancies with the other plan that they had, that the mesh went up to eight feet, but then the post went higher.
Okay.
If they're changing it to wooden, code was okay if it was eight feet.
Okay, I defer to Lisa, thanks, Lisa.
All right, it's going to be eight feet on the record. Perfect. Okay, Wes, any other comments?
No, no comments from, from LaBella.
Okay. We do have a draft resolution, and hearing, no objections to the application, and hearing that you're addressing some of the questions that came forward. You guys okay with us moving ahead with the resolution, so I will read it, if I can. Whereas, the planning board made the following findings a fact for the integrated, oh, sorry. Wrong one, First Light Fiber Site Modification Plan, 7890 Lehigh Crossing. Number one, site plan application was received on March 7th, 2023, from First Light Fiber. And there's five other wheres. Whereas, the Town and Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on April 11th, 2023, and identified no significant impacts. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the project First Light Fiber Site Plan Modification will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared, and be it further resolved that the applicant, application of First Light Fiber Incorporated site plan entitled First Light Fiber Site Plan Modification, drawn by Erdman Anthony, dated January 30th, 2023, received by the planning board March 7th, 2023, planning board application, O8SP 2023, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the site plan. That one condition is standard, ongoing conditions, also a standard condition, and be it further resolved that the planning board secretary distribute the planning board's approval letter. So, I do hear a motion for approval of that resolution, I'm sorry?
Move.
Ernie moves?
Second.
Joe second, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried four zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. I hope you all have a great evening.
Thank you.
You too. Final item this evening, Integrated Systems Charging Stations, 50 Victor Heights Parkway. Owners, Integrated Systems Properties LLC. Applicants requesting approval to install five dual charging bollards in the pre-existing parking area. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
Good. What can I answer for you, other than the...
Name and who you work for, and...
Jeremy Stramanine, S.A. Construction. I'll be doing the installation of the charging bollards at 50 Victor Heights Parkway for Integrated Systems. And I'm here representing Mark Hamilton, the owner of the LLC.
I'm trying to, I'm a little behind on this, I should have brought this up as I was speaking. Oh, you submitted a revised plan on...
Not the most technically savvy, as I was mentioning earlier, so, that was my first rendition.
So, yeah.
Yeah, the other one, I've improvised from that, we've altered that path, and we just went ahead with all five in a row down the existing parking spaces rather than having the one satellite off to the side.
Yeah, I believe that one raised a few eyebrows, so...
Yeah, I'm thinking it would have probably compromised the handicap parking and the turnaround there, so.
Yep. So, you have five charge stations placed every other spot along the front of the building, starting at the handicap space?
Figured we'd allot one for the handicap space as well.
Okay. Al, questions?
Probably just, the only one I have is, again, my confusion probably over the schematic, but it indicates proposed building, is that an existing building? And just using the old...
This is a site plan from when you guys, I think, were approving the initial build for 50 Victor Heights Parkway.
Okay.
Lisa was kind enough to let me have that, to utilize that site plan, because my first rendition was a little out of sorts there. So, yeah, this was before the building was built, so as I replied to code enforcement, I don't know who I was replying to, but in any event, that's a pre-existing lighting. There's already wall boxes, you know, reflectors, and already should be within the confines of code as far as lighting goes.
Okay, well, that was my only question and comment, is, you know, certainly, I think, needed infrastructure if we're transitioning to electric vehicles, we need to put a lot of infrastructure in place, so it's a step in the right direction.
Thank you, man. It'll be an interesting adventure here for all of us, I'm thinking.
Joe?
I do think it's kind of a, an interesting move. I was particularly impressed with the cover letter, the kind of vision expressed by the owners. I am curious that he mentioned residents having access to it as well as the employees, and that's kind of a cool deal, because you pay to get your car charged in a few places, and I know I'd be sneaking into, well, not even sneaking into the parking lot, getting charged, right?
So, the, you know, the real deal here is that this is going to be, this is publicly accessible. So, being it's not a gated parking lot, anybody can drive in there, there's no posted signs, no stay out, as long as you... So, being it's not a gated parking lot, anybody can drive in there, there's no posted signs, no stay out, as long as you have, you know, the required apparatus, you know, your electric vehicle with, you know, apps or whatever it's gonna take, I have no idea on that end of it, I could install them all, but I've never experienced an electrical, or electric vehicle, so I'd imagine this will show up on the apps as a accessible charging area, and people will be able to decide, I mean, happen to be going down the road, no, wow, I could use a charger, sorry, and there's, oh, there's one, they'll be able to pull in. So, this, this whole project is incentivized by NYSERDA, as I'm sure you guys are aware of, so there are 90% reimbursement on the make-ready side of this, to get these ready to install, so they can be accessible to the public, so we can move into this. Everybody has electric vehicles, and we can actually charge them somewhere. So, yeah, that's the push, and.
And it's gonna have two courts per unit?
Yeah, so they'll be dual bollards.
And do you, I'm, I'm curious about code with, with, with handicap parking requirements, do we have to have handicapped access to electric charging stations?
There is one here, is what he's proposing.
Well, I put one there just out of, you know, you know, courtesy is the fact that if I was handicapped and I had an electric vehicle, I wouldn't mind pulling into a space and being able to charge, so whether that was good or bad, I just, it felt right, so.
First one on the bottom.
I do see it, my apologies.
No, no, no problem. Yeah, and just for clarity, this is my inception, this is my design, this is the first one as well for the company, linked up with Chris Walls from NYSERDA and working with, geez, I can't remember his name now. Mr. Tripp, we'll call him, from Atom Power, so this is a completely, this is a cutting-edge, brand-new tech. This is not like the stuff you see in most any places I've seen in electric chargers. It's not self-contained in the bollard. The bollards are actually safe, they're actually just satellites of the apparatus, so the control, the enclosure will be inside of the building. As you see, the blue line goes over to the building. There's a utility room there existing that has the three-phase panel coming in, some sub panels, and some networking and security and everything else in there, so that's where the actual enclosure will be, that houses the brains of the chargers. So, they're the only ones in existence as of now, solid-state digital breakers. So, that's what this whole process is about. So, rather than a charger, say you got EV, there's a bunch of them out there, we see them, Seema Connectors, a ton of these bollards, but they've got everything, is included in the bollard, you know, this power supply all the time, you know, as far as redundancies, I'm sold on this much more than I would be on those and was on those, because there's no power going to any one of these bollards until somebody activates it. You know, the breaker will have to, to acknowledge the signal, you know, from, you know, the networked bollard, whatever one you pull up to, whatever one you interface with will then accept you, will then authorize you, will then, you know, will then supply you with power as opposed to your pull-up, so. Not you, so, so in comparison, you could, you know, blow through one of these existing chargers, and that's, you know, 50 or 100 amps right there live, and, you know, obviously, hopefully, there's safety, you know, redundancies involved, but this is, for me, I think this is the future of this stuff, so. I was sold on it, my first one, we'll see how it works.
Pretty neat, I'm done, thank you.
Ernie?
Bless you.
Questions?
My car is a hybrid.
You don't have a plug?
Yeah.
No, this looks like a good plan, and it's available to anybody who wants to plug in, I guess that's.
I assume there's a charge to this?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, there's gotta be a way to recover the electric.
Yeah, it's management governed by management software program, tons of different choices, options for, for that, but specifically for the Atom Power system, we'll be using, you know, their proprietary management software, which allows you to set all sorts of, I mean, I mean functionality, I guess. I mean, you can do, there's more adjustments than you could probably want to deal with on these as far as, you know, peak time, off-peak time, you know, how many amps goes to what charger, who can use which one, you know, there's tons of different variables that you can set with the software. So, that part I haven't got into yet, that'll be the next hurdle, is programming these and, and having them be as, as functional as possible for the customers, but as you mentioned, there's a price point. So, I mean, unless you're the owner and you've given yourself a free pass, I mean, anytime you plug this into your car, it's gonna be X amount of, of cents or dollars per kilowatt hour. So, in reality, that's supposed to be the, you know, the, you know, make your money back. I mean, that's, that's supposed to be what, you know, makes this more of a viable option, rather than looking at, well, hey, it's cost me, you know, $10,000, and I gotta pay $250 a charger for software management, and then what? You just keep paying out. So, in reality, this is trying to set, for this individual situation, this is not about making money off charging, you know, this is about having this as an option. So, Mr. Hamilton, I believe, will, will work together on finding a price point that breaks even. And I feel that that's where this project is, and I'm sure there'll be others that are more geared towards profitability, you know, and cross that bridge and we get to it, I guess.
Wes, any questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir.
In the area where you've, where the bollards will be going, and I'm interested in hearing a little bit about the trenching, if you're gonna be trenching there, are you gonna be saw cutting into the pavement or the sidewalk, and how will that be restored? And also, what type of foundation is there for the bollard? Or do you dig into the ground and provide like a concrete foundation, or do you? Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yes, sir. So, there is some, so I apologize to include that in the plans, other than the, the attachments for Atom Power and their bollards themselves, but we would just be going off of the recommended footing requirements for the bollards for their size and their, you know, their weight. I think it's 12 by 12 and 12 inches deep. We're gonna be trenching three foot deep in conduit, there'll be a pull box out around basically where it makes the turn.
Yep.
As it starts heading to the parking spaces, there'd be a pull box where individual conduit will come out of that pull box to serve each bollard for, for expansion purposes. So, if, if and when it comes to adding more, we would have, you know, the ability to do so with the pull box and the conduit that we use. So, that would be the process, three-foot trench, you know, schedule 40, you know, gray electro conduit, you know, 12 by 12 by 12 foot, or 12 by 12 by 12 inches deep, piers with four anchor bolts coming out of them, to set the bollards with a two-inch piece of PVC coming out of that footing, so we could set these, you know, the bollards on it, bolt them down, wire them, and that's not gonna be in the sidewalk. My idea, my approach would be to cut into the asphalt driveway and then have my bollard footings come up to the same height as the sidewalk is. So, rather than to cut into the sidewalk and into the existing curb and everything that's there, and then I was not comfortable with having them down at the asphalt level for plowing and, you know, any kind of damage situation, so at least if we can get them up to the same height as the existing sidewalk, that would be a buffer for, for plowing, and so, I mean, it really isn't much we can do, hopefully, people don't, you know, drive through them. They're pretty substantial, but at least that'd be a little bit of a failsafe on that, and it makes the installation easier, because we're just cutting through the asphalt rather than cutting into the concrete, compromising the curb and the sidewalk, so on and so forth.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Again, public hearing, any comments from the public?
Oh, I do have another question, only because maybe we've seen it in, in other instances. Is there any illumination that is released from these bollards?
Good question, because I've definitely seen some of those in my search for, for sourcing products here. These have the smallest of, like a one diode LED, but that's it, one on each, one on each side that shows that it's actually activated and, you know, in working order.
Okay, we don't, so we don't see a red neon?
You wouldn't see, no, you wouldn't see anything other, no, no. I'd be in trouble if that was the case, for sure, no.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Wes. Hearing none, and this is a public hearing, ask for a resolution to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Al moves, Ernie seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
It's carried. There's no objection, I think we're all set to move forward with this application. So, for Integrated Charging Stations, 50 Victor Heights Parkway, application 9SP 2023. Whereas, the planning board made the following findings a fact, there are six of them, whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on April 11th, 2023, and identified no significant impacts. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the project Integrated Charging Stations will not have a significant impact on the environment, and that a negative declaration be prepared, and be it further resolved that the application of Jeremy Streman?
Stramanine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Site plan entitled Integrated Charging Stations dated March 7th, 2023, received by the Planning Board March 7th, 2023. Last revised, March 23rd, 2023, Planning Board Application, 9SP 2023, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions set to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature, number one is standard, number two, that the comments from the code enforcement officer dated April 6th, 2023, be addressed, ongoing conditions, both standard, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. I hear a motion for approval.
Move.
Ernie moves?
Second.
Yeah. Joe seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried four zero.
Thank you, folks, very much.
Thank you.
They're just gonna become a common theme here, I'm thinking, we'll see. I appreciate all your time.
At least the fourth one, starting with Tesla, I think, so.
Yeah.
Let's just hope that the electrical grid can handle it, two recharging stations.
That's the key, they gotta go hand in hand, right, infrastructure and.
Right. Thank you.
You as well.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will move.
Al moves, Ernie seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a great week.